Good morning, everyone, and welcome to your Senate chambers. It is now ten fourteen A M. February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and I hereby call this E A G I committee meeting to order. I am Selena Babata, and I'm the Chair of this committee. And at this time, I would like to recognize the Legislative Assistant, Ms. Jolynn Tagabaw, to call the role of the committee in session.
Senator Karina Selena Arbabaata.
Present.
Senator Karina Omagoshman.
Present.
Senator Paul I Mangonya.
Senator Donald I Mangonya.
Present.
Madam Chair, all four members are present.
Sisus Massey, Ms. Tagewell, with all four members present, we have established the necessary quorum to conduct today's official meeting. I want to welcome everyone to your Senate chambers. And for everyone's information, we are broadcasting live on N M I Legislature's Facebook and YouTube page, as well as on local channel K twenty-three. And if for any reason we need to take a break or go on recess, Facebook will continue to stream live without the audio, just for your precaution. Um, we've already gone through the administrative matters. I would also like to introduce the professional Legislative Bureau staff who are assisting the committee this morning. First and foremost, we have our Legal Counsel, Mr. Joe Bermudez. As I mentioned earlier, Ms. Jolynn Tagabaw is the Legislative Assistant assisting the committee today. Uh, to keep order in the quorum, we have our Sergeant at Arms, Mr. Ben Terlahe and Mr. Brendan Mangonya. And to ensure that this meeting is properly recorded and digitized, we have our I T Manager, Mr. Jonathan Diaz, and his assistant, Mr. Delbert Camacho. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And can I get a motion, please, at this time to adopt today's agenda? Members?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor to adopt today's agenda, and it has been seconded. Are there any objections or concerns raised? There being none, the agenda for today's meeting is duly adopted at this time. We will now invite Mr. Oscar Babata, the Special Assistant for Administration, and the nominee herself, Ms. Trinidad Lisua Rabaliman, to please join us in the chamber. Mr. Babata will formally introduce the nominee, Ms. Rabaliman, to the committee and introduce her to us, as well as say a few words. And then we will turn over the floor to um the public for public comments. Mr. Babata, you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so it's good to be back again before this committee. Uh, the administration sincerely appreciates your and that of the members of this august committee uh for conducting this public hearing. And as you're probably uh aware, we have recalled Ms. Trini's name back uh because as a result of your pressing schedules, uh yourself, Madam Chair, and your members of this committee. At any rate, we thank you again for the opportunity to be here this morning. And once again, I salute and extend our Buenos and Hafaday, Tiro, and good morning to all of you, Senator Chairwoman Babata, and the members, and including the people in the gallery, and so as the nominee's family who are here this morning to provide her for support this morning. For the record, my name is Oscar Mabata, Special Assistant for Administration under the Office of the Governor on behalf of Honorable Governor Arnold I Palacios and Honorable Lieutenant Governor David M. Apateng. I thank you again for the opportunity to appear before you today. I'm here to officially introduce the Governor and Lieutenant Governor's nominee for the Commonwealth Election Commission. Uh, a member of the board, Ms. Trinidad M. Rabaliman, fondly na uh fondly call uh or remember rather as Trini. By this time, you should have in your possession Ms. Rabaliman's resume describing her professional experience in education and also her lengthy length of service with the Commonwealth Election Commission, to which we failed to see in her resume. But she is here to shed some lights on the duration of her tenure several years ago. Uh, well, shall we say many moons ago. Uh, as her experience with all of you this morning, uh back then in the old days. Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apateng have complete have a complete trust and confidence on Mrs. Rabaliman to continue to assist our Commonwealth and serve the Commonwealth Election Commission. Her experience, credentials, and commitment to serving the Commonwealth make her outstanding candidate for this role. We're confident that she is well-prepared to answer any questions you may have and present her vision again for the future. And we can ask for your expeditious approval on our nominee to serve the people of the Commonwealth. Thank you, Sisus Massey, Galiso, for the opportunity to appear before all of you again this morning. And I, we earnestly uh urge and encourage everyone of you to expedite her her confirmation, Madam Chair, since the Commission is currently uh lack the necessary quorum to conduct order of business for the midterm elections uh this coming November. That being said, Madam Chair, if no objection from all of you, from the members, as a good friend of ours, Ms. Trini Rabaliman has been away from government uh for several years, and most especially from the Election Commission. And I wish to indulge your approval. Uh, if I may ask, the Executive Director, Ms. Kayla Igito, to sit with her uh to answer pertinent questions that you may have. Uh, she has been away uh for many years, and there are several changes in the election policy that she's not attuned to too much. But uh I guess Ms. Kayla Igito would shed some lights and would answer any questions that each member might have. If no objection, Madam Chair, I wish for the chair to call upon the Executive Director to join Ms. Rabaliman up in the front. Thank you very much, Sisus Massey, Danieliso.
Thank you, Mr. Babata. I have no objections. Are there any objections from the members? None heard? Ms. Igito, would you please come and join us? And I'm glad you're available today because we have some serious questions. So I appreciate your being present here. At at that, um with with that said, I would now like to open the floor for public comments at this time. Anyone who wishes to make public comments, please uh state your name and the entity you represent, and you are allowed five minutes. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for also reminding me to state my name and the agency I represent. My name is Felix Noges. I am here on behalf of Caroline Affairs and most importantly, Caroline Committee. I I know that the nominee spent most of her time within the private sector. Uh, also, uh, the fact is, he has uh assumed this position uh in passing years. Uh, I know that she'll be an asset to the to the board itself, and I humbly hope that you would support in making her confirmation for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Noges. The floor is still open for public comments. Would you like to make? I will recognize Ms. Kayla Igito at this time.
Hafaday, Tiro, my name is Kayla Igito. I am the Executive Director for the Commonwealth Election Commission. I'm here today to provide my testimony on the nomination of Ms. Trinidad Rabaliman. Good morning, Chairwoman Babata, Honorable members of the Executive Appointment and Government Investigation. I thank you for the opportunity to express my support of the nominee, Ms. Trinidad Rabaliman, who will be representing the Third Senatorial District. I've had the privilege in working with Ms. Rabaliman when she first served on the Commonwealth Election Commission Board in twenty twelve through twenty seventeen. Ms. Rabaliman is knowledgeable in her role as a member and is familiar with the election laws and process. I'm confident that if confirmed, she'll be an asset to the Election Commission in upholding the mission in conducting a fair and honest and impartial election. I look forward to working alongside Ms. Rabaliman for the upcoming general election. Sisus Massey dan Eliso Remi.
Thank you, Ms. Igito. The floor is still open for public comments.
Hafaday, Tiro, Uwami, Amaga Umo'gaan, Leso Ro Amamayngali Ha Mi, Guahuilahin Mizu Bisinun Mizu Si John Oliver Abolis Palacios Sablan Pangilinan Gonzalez. Nu Sumen Maguzu Motu Na Ugaan Para Ta Danyai Ilinazan Para Ta Nu Adzu'us Zanta Abiba Ima Nu Zotin Ina An Ms. Trini Rabaliman Para U Holum Tati Gi Pro Membrun I Inet Nun Election Commission. Um, Nu Tadza Nu Tadku Uhunguk Pa Si Ms. Rabaliman Utunguna Mampus Nu Uh Nu Silensiu Very quiet but very respectable. Um, I want to Malaguzu Nu Mumensona Nagitetsu Minia Uh Debita Ta Lipada and always remind ourselves that as members of the board, we assume intrinsic innate fiduciary trust in the role we play as members of a board. And I think that carries paramount weight and obligation to ensure that the role is conducted with the most uh no respectable, ethical, and responsible manner such that the public trust is upheld. And I have no doubt that Auntie Trini will play that good role. Um, I do ask her and her esteemed colleagues to uh for some wish list that I think we need to uh, how do you say, get with the program or uh obviously while look new uh get on our level now with gadgets and and technology. Um, I respectfully ask Ms. Trini and her colleagues at the Election Commission uh to uphold integrity and efficiency uh in automatic elections with no delays, that we achieve convenience and ease with built-in uh tiers of transparency and accountability and self-regulation to ensure nothing otherwise uh through automation. Megayna Ma Famago'unta Zan Manyeluta Familiyatta Mangayyo Trutano. And unsadly, they don't have the the luxury and the liberty to go download the forms, uh the how many forms, go meet a public notary, pay thirty, forty, fifty bucks per notary, get back and send it that day or that, you know, as soon as possible. It really is inconvenient, and I think it behooves all of us uh to uh no uh modernize and automate our system so that it becomes, you know, uh an incentive, no, it becomes inclusive to call our uh eligible voters uh to to do their part. And I think if we meet them halfway, uh that will go a long way in ensuring that democracy is thriving, that democracy is preserved, and that everybody participates. So uh Election Commission Member Auntie Trini I Mangatzung, this is my wish list, so that our children, our families abroad can better, better participate. And if there are loopholes in the law that need to be changed, I ask your humble and swift speedy Gonzalez action to change that law to allow whatever needs to be done so that we uh incorporate and 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 invite and attract all of our voters because they deserve nothing less in a democracy that should be thriving for the benefit of that public trust. Sisus Massey, and I I urge your support. Za Sibu Apre Bali Ya'ala Nomination Auntie Trini Rebo Tolong Re La Election Commission Iila Barre Bu Feri Meta Dipasi Meta Uh Uh Echach Para Ya'ala Responsibilidad Alat Trabaho We Sebu Akachi No Nu Ya'ash Uh Uh Votashon Listihila Esta Mamaila Na Tempu Eliso Rep Namitu Ma Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Gonzalez, The Dispensas Atisino Sangan To'du Re Apudidun Yun Planta Pakugine Na Ugan Lo Sin Mas Sisus Massey. The floor is still open for public comments. If there are no further um individuals from the gallery who wish to make public comments, I will close that portion this morning. However, we will reopen it um this afternoon at two P M. when we also uh vet the nominees for the Marianas Public Land Trust, who have two nominees uh being vetted this afternoon. I want to um state for the record that the committee has received uh not received any letters in opposition of the nominees, uh the nomination for Ms. um Rabaliman. Also, I want to state for the record that on December twenty, December first, twenty twenty-three, Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apateng nominated Ms. Trini Trinidad Lisua Rabaliman to serve as a member of the Commonwealth Election Commission, representing the Third Senatorial District or Saipan and the Northern Islands, but more importantly, representing women in the Riffaloas community. And the role of the Commonwealth Election Commission here in our Commonwealth plays a very crucial role in ensuring democracy is alive and well here in the Commonwealth in several ways. They conduct free and fair elections. They maintain neutrality. And they ensure that the process is free from bias, and that is expected by the community they serve. They also enforce, they set the parameters and enforce the laws uh or rules for voter registration, candidate qualifications, polling procedures. And this ensures transparency and fairness throughout the process. Um, there are also other um obligations that the Election Commission has, such as voter education outreach. Um, transparency and communication plays a vital role in what they do and to provide clear and accessible information about elections, candidates, uh the results, helps in ensuring and building public trust, trust in the system. Um, with that said, I will now invite Ms. Rabaliman to please raise your right hand while our Legislative Assistant will administer the oath to you.
Please raise. Trinidad Lisua Rabaliman, you do solemnly swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you shall give in the matter at hand shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Ms. Rabaliman. With that, I will give the floor to you, should you desire to address the committee or the public, if you so choose. Um, uh, now will be the opportunity to do so. If you do not, we will proceed on with the question and answer portion. Is there anything you wanna, opening remarks or anything you wanna relate to the committee?
Chairwoman, she has nothing to say at the time, as at as of this time.
Thank you. So we will proceed with the question and answer portion. And I will begin with some foundational questions. Um, I understand that you were a former member or Commissioner of the Commonwealth Election Commission. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. Ms. Rabaliman, are you a registered voter of Saipan for the Northern Islands?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's part of the statutory requirement, by the way. So you voted in past elections?
Yes.
Have, did you vote in twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Um, did you vote in twenty twenty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the reason why I ask that is because if if confirmed, um one of the concerns we hear from the community is the delay in announcing results. Um, and that has happened, you know, previously. So the longer the delay, the more mistrust, I think, is harbored by the community. They're wondering what is going on and and the like. So open and transparent communication is very crucial during election night or anytime we hold elections. Um, so we hope that if you are confirmed, that you will um seek to immediately address this concern. Um, also, one of the questions I have is, if you are confirmed, what are your priorities for the Election Commission? What what do you plan? You've been a previous member. You are now nominated. If you are confirmed, what do you hope to see changed or remain the same with the Election Commission?
Um, Chairwoman, um, Ms. Rabaliman is really nervous right now. But um she'd like to assure all of you that she would work closely with the other board members and myself as well in um making sure that um the election laws are up to par with the times that we are in now.
Ms. Rabaliman, would you feel more comfortable if I spoke tomorrow or?
Um, no, Madam Chair.
I I know you understand English, but would it help ease your anxiety or nervousness? You don't have to be nervous. You're not under investigation. You're not under. Would it help you if we spoke?
I'm just not used to.
You're fine. You're doing fine.
Okay, Be Fais No Hafa Planumu Zangin Makufit Maho Hafa Planumu Hafa Hafa Malago'mu Poroma Tulaka Pat Poroma Kontinua Segunki Experenciamu Ne Gi Man Ma'pus No Gi Election Commission Ko Guaha Inatan Mu Nu Nissito Matulaikan Nissito Ma Amen Da Dididi Pad U Ma Arregla Pat Osino Gi Gi Man Ma'pus Na Experenciamu Ko Maulika To'dui Sistema Segunki Experenciamu
Maulika?
Maulika Gi Gi Anay Mo Membru Ho Gi Gi Man Ma'pus Gi Election Commission Ko Guaha Linei Paro Mu Nu Nu Nissito Ma Arregla Ko Ma Xa U Ma Improve Pat Tadza Tadza Nlipara Tadza Nu Tengaf Domu Frustration Ni Sistema Tadza
I Paraguau The First Time Mm-mm. Fabialum Twenty-twelve Mm, Maulika Paraguau
Mm-mm. Um. Zan Man Meeting Amzu Segunki Afain Diskukuti I Pla'nu Sa Election Year Pakuna Sakano Ta Kompenjaino Uh Sempe Zangin Sekosu Na Makufit Maho Ma Man Meeting Amzu Put Half-Tim Manu I Votashon Arreglamentonya Ko Guaha Segunki Sinitemu Nu Purun Rekomenda Pat Maulika To'du
Maulika To'du.
Okay. I will now yield to the other members. Um, who would like to go first? Senator, I will recognize Senator Paul Mangonya.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Push uh Ms. Rabaliman Ane Nu Man Yetio Quatro Anios Gi Board of Election
Mm-mm.
Okay, Adi Chairman Gi Ano Na Tempu?
Si. For Mrs. Francis Sablon?
Oh, Francis Sablon, I see. Guane Umono Para Luta Gi Anin Eleksyon Para Ezen Pa Matufunggi Balotu Luta
Mm-mm.
Okay, In Chidigwati Bat Konairi No Gi Na Oni Zan Guane Inkatga Nu Machina Eleksyon No Pa Mangpung No
Mm-mm.
Good.
Which is, which is wonderful meeting, you know? Uh, Mano Ama Para Luta Just For Meeting?
Oh, For Meeting Ati Gi Eleksyon Day No?
No, no, no.
Oh, Si Pus Tuntungu Is Situasyon Gi No?
Ay.
Oh, okay. Push uh uh Tadza Nlipara Gi Sinya Ta Na Lamoli Gi Sistema Para Gi Zaluta Tinian Or Saipan Izi Gi Gi Anin Eleksyon Guane An Anin Eleksyon No Man Manana Ha Amzu Te Mananazan Matufunggi Balotu No Lingni Agiza Philippine Mizon Zan Mizon Ista Munodzan Ki Ba Philippine Itan Nu Rabiat Ta Tutufu Ha I I Desna Balotu Lo Unniya No Man Mananana Pus Unu Si Si Mr. Gonzalez Amenshim Put Di Convenience And Di Po Enteguiti Zan Sadik No Inigi Xie I Ta'au Manesa Lo An Ma'pu Eleksyon Ista Mananaza Ista Pagutita Tutungu Afai Risutu Ne No Pus Tadza Recomendasyon Mu Mon Izi Idiomo Afan Xie Ta Na La'tsadik Eno Um Matufung Dinant Xie Ne Da Ufenodzan Antis Du Manana Antis Du Ta Tangmak Um, Tu Expetapon Tungu To'dui I Answer Ne Lo Inigi Unu Magadongpulu Na Problema Ne Za Mauli Sakegi I Diriktod Gi Fionmu Za U Disesha Nasinya Man Indiskutesti Ma'sa Ne Sa Pudempulu Luta Luta Ne Nu Gi Ano Na Oni Para Ezen Tinian Beti Mita Na Botu Wa Ya'la'tsa Ane Tadza Esti Machina Man Akumpren Diamaggi Matufungnya Sa Singku Gi Oi Umpatira Singku Gi Otrupatira Man Danya Ma Baba Kadu Unu Munodzan Agi Las Ma'utsume Balotu Gilaseti Munodana Gi Las Nuebi Las Desi Ista Matungo Aji Mangana Za Pus Tuttungu Iligan Ne Za Sinya Be Fangentu Za Niligo Consul Lo Sinya Beti Parafa Nu Bat Konairi Watu Ne No Parafa Machina Nu Ju Sa Iji Gi Beti Man Nissita Saipan Sa Bulan Mas Ta'au Za Ta Chuli Machina Para Luta Pus Mananga Saipan Angin Delay Bat Konairi Sa Bobai Tempu Nu Madile Lu Ki Saipan Ne Lo Tuttungo Afai Masutza Za Matufungka Ne Asa Sen'tua Menus Ki Sen'tuna Balotu Munodzan Agi Dosuras Za Guaxia Bulan Mo Ta Ne Gi Gyaluki Public Auditor Attorney General Mangaygi Asia Pus Tuttungu Ko Sinya Ta Atan Pan Eno Ko Ko Sinya Parafa Machina Za Leroni Machina Binti Ne No Nu No Matutufu Omachuli Jena Balotu plus, du, tungo, kusina, ta, atan, pa, na, no, ko, kusina, para, fa, makina, za, le, ro, ni, makina, binti, na, no, no, matutufung, omachuli, je, na, balotu, za, ma, tufung, makina, Saipan, gi, se, genti, dia, low, si, ya, matufung, ka, na, ya, gi, gi, election, da, plus, is the, ta, tungo, aji, mangana, na, za, ma, si, accurate, sa, matufung, ka, na, ya, na, public, wa, todo, no, na, da, para, fa, di tananga, no, fati, but, can, afan, angin, gumeke, ty, fun, si, pi, but, you know, ti, ta, disesha, low, afan, angin, gumugupi, plan, za, ma, fundri, but, can I, ri, da, plus, managwata, election, we never know, right, na, plus, ah, inigi, uno, ino, inigi, uno, i, o, true, ah, ah, bitipudi, ga, is, ti, keela, na, za, pu, panungo, ka, i, problema, loki, na, is, ti, i, i, kada, election time, no? Gupi, bumula, emplea, gi, Board of Elections. Du, tungo, man, gi, manu, je, na, emplea, na, low, no, debi, wa, systema, no, na, zangin, no, nishita, na, keela, kinsy, ah, kinsy, pat, binti, no? Ma, no, na, ma, matu, no, na, emplea, ma, gi, ko, gi, ni, gubernu, pa, gi, ni, senador, pa, gi, ni, imazot, pa, gi, ni, manu, ma, gi, no, gupi, na, bumula, sendalumo, gi, oficina, no, za, finen, na, ko, ma, ma, training, no, inigi, uno, isigundo, ko, man, timampuliliti, ka, na, sa, la, ni, dangin, pururu, gi, ni, no, elector official, manao, o, gupi, no, yes, si, pi, ko, la, tu, angukuloki, si, pi, risutu, no, sa, du, tungo, na, low, gi, ni, ya, la sa, she, ah, ya, lo, mi, tres centus, na, ma, ma, challenge, na, balotu, gi, off island, maski, la mita, gi, ni, luta, da, ma, man, no, ko, when I, na, fan, omg, ju, na, man, ma, a, a, zik, aji, na, dispensa, na, director, low, si, ya, limo, ay, low, i, emplea, na, ne, ma, peg, a, gi, ne, ma, ne, ma, hal, um, gi, computer, za, che, che, kada, balotu, si, ya, afu, focus, gi, gi, balotu, luta, na, ta, fu, focus, gi, gi, Commonwealth, in general, plus, is, na, pisisupagow, is, ti, i, zangin, no, nishita, yes, plus, debi, but, ipa, tira, turudus banda, u, gwa, ha, no, no, inajignia, ma, she, yes, yes, plus, is, na, ogun, a, zik, na, singku, singku, rafu, gi, na, singku, singku, na, da, kusaki, i, yes, na, tau, tau, mu, balansa, no, she, man, a, a, ki, a, zii, man, a, a, atan, na, da, man, na, dinansi, right? Plus, as the manu, pagu, be, fa, si, no, fan, director, the system, mama, na, election, how you gonna get the extra workers? Kusaki, si, ya, ungu, si, Ms. Rabalaman, da, ta, ta, the manu, pongkoni, yes, na, emplea.
Well, the same way we do it every, every election year is, we, we, let the administration know that, or the legislature know that we need fifteen or ten plus employees to help run the election, help us run the election. So where we have that funding, which we were actually, we were lucky enough that we had those grant, the grant money that came in. So we were able to just hire on our own. So we were, we didn't announce it, but we, we were getting recommendations from staff, just within in-house, you know? Yeah.
E, peligrunya, no, na, sa, man, atungwa, is, na, alum, na, is, a, na, o, si, for, onu, malago, matso, tu, plus, ma, kuniao, todo, Democrat, or, ma, kuniao, todo, Republican, election, ta, gi, she, na, debi, wa, fair way, right?
So what you're proposing is to get my temporary employees from the political party itself?
Yeah, like, that the political party recommend ten, ten, or some other form, and then you have a selection there, na, iku, na, kusaki, wa, loki, minimum qualification, or offered some other way, but it cannot be just within, you know, the, the Board of Elections, staffing, to recommend, but then they'll select, right, and there's no transparency, right? So I think we need to address that, right? Don't you think that we need to address that? So, any. Because it, it has to be done fairly. Kusaki, mungana, wa, di, nida, gi, publico, na, no, sa, mungana, umpatira, ha, ma, kuniao, la, za, man, na, fan, na, juda, so, let me tell you, i danger, I'll give you an example. That's why I think it was my amendment to say that all absentee voters, right, when they submit a request, they have to go on the computer listing right away, within, I think, no, keela, forty-eight hours. The reason for that is, the student that's requesting, na, they don't, they, they know that if the board gets it, his name will appear, because we don't want the Board of Elections to say, we haven't received it, we haven't received it, we haven't received it, only for the student to find out that election is two days from now, and they still haven't sent his or her ballot. So that's the reason for that. But equally as important is for that student to not only know, na, ma, list, that the ballot is sent. So they have to update another column that your ballot has been mailed out, which you have been doing, but, but, i, problema, na, if you have staffing in, in your office that knows who are these voters, they might just keep putting the student's ballot request on the side, pretending they didn't see it come in in the mail. I mean, you might say, we don't do that, but if I'm one of those political employees and hiding in there, I'll just hide some of the, you know, last name here, I know they're gonna vote for this candidate, so they'll just say, we haven't received it, we haven't received it. They wouldn't have prepared packets to mail out, right? So that's the reason why employees are very critical, you know, that they are fair and they don't take sides, no? So, so, you know, and I'm really concerned about the employees, this seasonal employees, na, that you have, no, in the selection process, no? Inigi, uno. Let me ask you this other question. You know, on election day, if you're from Rota, you cannot vote on Saipan, right? Or if you're from Saipan and you're on Rota, you cannot vote on Rota for the ballot if you're voting in one of the Saipan precincts. But for nine days before that, I don't know how many days exactly.
Seven.
Seven days, you can just go and vote.
Do early voting.
So anybody from Rota on Saipan or Saipan resident on Rota, they can vote for seven days prior to the election, but so they automatically assume, oh, I can also vote on election day, right? But they cannot, no?
They cannot.
So how many of those, every election, do, uh, come across your attention, that director, they're, they're getting mad because they wanna vote on election day, but they cannot?
Well, this past election, I think it was like maybe three from Tinian, two from Rota, and a lot from Northern Ireland.
Oh, Northern Ireland, they come in on election day and they cannot vote, no?
Yes.
Because they don't know, right? They could have come the day before and they would have been given a ballot, but because they came on election day, they were not given a ballot.
Well, with Northern Ireland, early voting was open forty-six days.
Four to six, four to six days?
Yes.
Before the election?
Yes.
But on election day, they cannot vote?
No, you would need to report back to your polling place.
You have to go back, right? Okay, so what's the purpose for that policy or law?
Which one?
That you cannot vote, if you're allowed to vote yesterday and the day before, why couldn't you be allowed?
Well, that's the way the election law is written. Well, you would need to, on election day, you would need to report to your sign, polling place.
Public purpose for that, is there?
I'm not sure, but that's in our election law.
Okay, but, but you wouldn't go against a, an amendment to the law that says, on election day, if legitimate reasons that they're there, they, they can vote on election day, right? If you're from Northern Ireland, to be able to vote on election day?
I think you'll be at the discretion of the board to decide that, you know, but I'm, I'm.
No, it's not the discretion of the board, it's the law now.
Yeah, it is the law, but if you were asking if we were to open that up.
Oh, no, if the law, if we're gonna make.
If the law changes, then of course I would follow the election law.
Yeah, but do you have any objection to that? Is there any concern that you have for that?
Well, like you said, the voter would need a, a legitimate reason as to why they are voting on election day away from their polling place.
Okay, so that's, there's really no reason for that then, right? There's an oversight in the law, maybe?
Probably, probably, but I'm just there to follow the election law.
Okay, so, for, for now, that's all my question. I'm gonna give the other members, but can the legal counsel take note of that, Chair, and maybe sponsor from the community, and amendment to the law, that? Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
May I?
Sure.
I, I don't know if I'm out of line, but I would like to ask Senator Minglon, how does he feel about getting rid of preliminary counts in Rota and Tinian? How do you feel about that? Getting rid of preliminary counts, because you were mentioning the, you know, how they tabulate the election results in Tinian and Rota. How do you feel about the law being amended where they do away with it?
Do away, and what is the substitute for that?
Nothing. It would be, the ballots will come and be treated just like Saipan ballots here.
I think Senator Paul, and correct me if I'm wrong, his concern is that there, they have to fly a plane there, bring all the ballots here in order to be counted, and there are situations, maybe where that may not be possible due to circumstances outside the election commission's control, weather, and likewise. So I think what he proposes is that the ballots be counted at the municipalities. So, so it's not necessarily.
Just to clarify, so you would, on election day, already have somebody from the board, right, to be watching? You have somebody from the Attorney General, you have somebody from the public auditor, they're all there already the day before the election. So why not just at seven P M., you know, get representative from all the parties, and then they'll count the ballot by hand, and then you have a result. I guarantee you, in one hour, you have a result of the accurate, and then, maybe that's not official, but it could be official, we can make it official, and then you can then have another count, the next day, when the plane leaves, first flight out, the next day, send it to Saipan, and they'll count, just to verify, but my point is, you don't need to send a ballot machine to Rota, because they need it on Saipan, they have a lot of voters here. Just let them count by hand. We have been doing that for decades, and we've been, never questioned the end result. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Paul. I will now recognize Senator Donald Minglon.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Ms. Rabalaman, and congratulations on your nomination to serve on the Commonwealth Election Commission. Now, I know, Mr. Gito, you're not, you're not here to, to address some of the concerns, but maybe to shed light on some of the things so that we can bring it up with the nominee, so that if confirmed, she can address them. I just wanted to get some clarification from you, Director, if that's okay. A lot of these are either done through the law or regulation, and that's something that the board can, can simply change. So in regards to absentee, do all ballots that come in after the election day, or whatever deadline is set, are they counted as felt to vote?
Yes.
And so I think that brings my concern up, and hopefully, if confirmed, Ms. Rabalaman, you can talk with other commissioners to address this. I think that, you know, while it, they are considered felt to vote, the point is they did vote, and it's just that with the, the way the mail is being operated, I think that's not something that should penalize voters from future elections, provided that they, they voted twice in a row, two time, two consecutive times, but it's just that it came in late. And we all know that, you know, when it comes, when it comes through APO addresses, or, you know, the ballot takes longer to get there, and it also takes longer to get, to get out of there. And so I hope that we can consider that these individuals are still active voters, and they have every intention to vote, it's just that the mail system, you know, caused a delay. Also, I wanted to bring up the concern with the mail-in application and the jurisdictions. I know that in previous elections, we've encouraged some prospective voters to, to mail in their application, because at least on Rota, maybe even on Tinian, you have to go look for where the commissioners are just to register. And so I, I think this one individual was advised to just mail it in so that it can, it's postmarked by the deadline, and so you know, you, you have that challenge of having the, the, you know, this individual that wants to vote, having to go look for a commissioner, because we don't have a an office on Rota, or we don't have staff to, to receive applications. And I know in the past, or recently, you've set a schedule of when individuals can, can meet with someone from C E C. So I hope, I think it, it might be through regulation, but if not, we can, that's something that the commissioners can discuss with the legislature to see how we can address it. Even, so, back to the, what I was just mentioning, this is a concern where if I'm on Rota, I can just mail in my application from Rota, and still have it counted as an application received, instead of having to go into a.
We're not able to do that, because any, any registration received through mail needs to be postmarked outside of the cinema.
Right, and so that's what I'm saying, because of the difficulty in trying to find a commissioner just to register, I think that's something that could be addressed, or could be amended, whether it's through law or regulation to allow for individuals to mail in within their jurisdiction. Just part of the challenges of, of having to register on Rota and Tinian, these are some of the things that were brought up. How recently was the? I know that, I, at least with this past election, there was a lot of challenges in regards to voters. What's the term? There was a lot of challenges with their residency or their disqualification. Is that something that was decided by the board recently to send out these notices to absentee voters?
Recently, or the past?
At least within the, the, the past election in twenty twenty-two.
The past election.
Is that a board decision?
Yes.
Do you know if that has changed since then?
Well, we have not been able to meet. We've only met in June, so we haven't had an actual board meeting after that.
But there's currently a quorum, yeah?
There is.
Is this part of some of the issues that your office had brought up to the board, or is it even an issue at this point?
It's been an issue.
But it just hasn't been addressed yet?
I guess.
And so, Ms. Rabalaman, I hope that that's something that you can work with the other commissioners on. Ms. Rabalaman, were you at the, during your time as a former commissioner, have you done any work on the NMD registry? Has, has there been any significant changes, or?
No, I didn't do anything on that.
Okay, so my question is back to the director, how accurate, or how often does the C E C, I don't know, try to do like some kind of registration for NMD, to keep track of our, the popu, NMD population here in the cinema?
Well, NMD registration is ongoing, so.
Has there been any outreach programs to get people registered? So we don't have an accurate list of?
Well, the list that you have is accurate, because those are the ones that are registered with us. But, I mean, like, doing outreach and going into villages and, and, uh, village, uh, senatorial districts to register people, we have not done that.
Does the, does the election?
But it's offered there, you know, it's offered with our board members, they have applications for.
I don't think people are aware that they could or should register into the NMD.
But I know here in Saipan, when you come and visit our, our office, they do offer that, you know? Do you, would you like to register for NMD, you know?
So it's not part of the, even just the regular application for?
No, it's, it's a separate application.
Okay, so I think that's another thing that maybe the commissioners can look at in trying to get people registered into this NMD registry, so that we have an accurate counting of our NMD population here in the cinema. Like you said, it's open to anyone that goes up to your office, but where's the office in Rota and Tinian, right? Or, I mean, they would have to go to the board members, and so, you know, I mean, you know, it's, it's a challenge, even if they're off, or, you know, we have to go to their house, or, you know, find a place to meet. So I hope that that's some of the things that could be addressed in trying to make it more, make C E C more accessible to the, the other districts. Whether it's to cross-train maybe a municipal employee to, to also assist the commissioners in that sense. So that's just one recommendation, Ms. Rabalaman, that I can offer. Ms. Rabalaman, just based on your experiences, as a commis, former commissioner, and also as a voter, are there any new developments that you would wanna see within the C E C? C E C?
Can you please repeat your question?
Since your time as a commissioner and even just as a CNMI voter after your time as a commissioner. Based on your experience, do you, is there something that you want to see differently done in this, within the C E C?
Right now, no.
So you're satisfied with the process that's been going on? Even as a voter, when you walk in and?
Yes.
Have, do you have family outside the CNMI that are absentee voters?
Yes.
Are there any challenges that they've shared with you, with their voting process?
No.
That's all I have for now, other than my last recommendation, Mr. Robalaman, if confirmed. I hope that, you know, when you meet as a, as a when the board gets together and meet officially, I hope that some of the election laws can be looked at and, and provide some of these recommendations to the legislature to see what's working and what's not. Like I said, a lot of these are also just done through regulation, and so that's something that the board can do, and so anything that we, any recommendations we have to the law, I hope that's something that the the board can share with the legislature to try to address that, to make future elections easier. One last question to the Director, any jurisdictions, whether it be U S or foreign, that does online voting, and if so, how, is that something that you looked at, and if that will work within the CNMI?
Um, I'm sure there is in the states that do online voting, but our neighboring island Guam does not do it, we don't do it, and I have not really looked into it. Just because our election, I mean, our, our election law doesn't permit it, but we could look into it, we could research it.
Okay, I hope that's something that you can look into, if, do you think these are, the funding that you get for elections would discover the advances in, in the election in terms of switching to a voting electronically?
It would help tremendously with the Northern Ireland voters, but.
I don't know how they're gonna vote online, I mean.
Well, I mean, we've met with the Northern Ireland mayor, and he was saying something about a satellite, getting internet connection. That would cost, you know, save, it will, it'd be a cost savings for us if we did do online voting, because that would be an option for registered voters that are residing in Northern Ireland, if they had internet connection, or when they do. Because then we could, you know, we don't need to spend on chartering a, a vessel.
Right. So I hope that's something that the C E C board can look into. You know, so many ways to verify identity, and so we can use that to see how we can reduce costs on postage, as well as the the challenges of getting ballots in on time, and so I hope that that could be implemented. That's all I have for now, Chair. Are you?
Thank you, Senator Mangonya. Recognize Senator Corina Magovna.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Good morning, Ms. Robalaman, and to you, Director Igito. No, congratulations, these are my nominations. So I hope now, after a few minutes has passed by. Okay, well, that makes two of us, so maybe it would help if you would just consider it as us having a conversation in the room without these microphones, no? But if not, I, I know that you, you were probably prepared to come in, answer some of the questions, but some of the questions, clarifying questions really, is to help make the recommendation to Ms. Robalaman, should she be confirmed, so I do apologize that we are asking some clarifying questions, but I think it's necessary, and it, and it's great that you're here, so that she herself could also hear and understand what the needs are, she should be confirmed. Senator Donald had talked about the NMD registry, right? And my line of question would be more on the registry in general, right, so both NMD and just U S citizens. How often does the registry get updated?
Our registration for voters?
Right, so like, you know, like, on an election year, you know, interested parties would go and request for a, a copy of the registry to, to get an idea, a sense of you know, how many registered voters are, are, you know, there in the CNMI, and some use it for analytical purposes and stuff like that, so how, how often does the registry get updated?
It's daily.
Daily.
So every time a voter registers, it's inputted that day, or by the end of business day.
Got it. And what about for, okay, so, so it's updated when the, uh, voters come into register, what about for deceased persons?
Uh, we get the listing from the vital statistics from C H C every month.
Oh, every month, so it, it, it is updated every month when the report is received.
Yes, and we also get a vital statistics from Guam.
Okay, and, and I'm only asking, and I'm inquiring, because we have, you know, during an election year, obviously, you know, the, the interested parties would look at those registry, and they would notice that there are some names on the registry that were, are no longer.
If the voter, you know, did pass out of the Commonwealth, we wouldn't know that. And unless a family member comes in with a death certificate.
Okay.
Or, you know, two years rolls around and they didn't vote, they'll be purged off.
Got it, okay. Okay, so that explains the process. The next one is for, again, he touched on the NMD registry. I'm not familiar with what the process is, so how, what's the verification process like for, for someone to come in and register as an NMD?
Well, they would provide the birth certificate, then we would look at it. It would show if their parents are of NMD descent, meaning they were born here. And then if they're not, but their parents were, we would request for more more evidences, or more, yeah, more evidence to prove that they are NMD.
So you're able to extract that information from a birth certificate, whether or not the parents are born here in the CNMI? Okay, sorry, I probably need to look at the birth certificate more often. Okay, so on the, on the birth certificate, it has the name of the child and then the parents, and then on the certificate itself, it shows where the parents were born?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. There's been some issues, and I'm sure you're aware of this, where during an election year, there are voters that reside, let's say, in Cagman, but they are registered in precinct three. You know, and they've been residing in precinct five for many years. I, I don't know if this is a question to our council, but like, wha, what are, what is the requirement? I, I, I mean, don't they need to, to update where they live, and what, what is C E C doing to kind of like regulate that and enforce it?
To be honest, we have not, you know, done anything to enforce that, because I wouldn't know if the individual moved. The only way is for people to come in and challenge the voter.
Got it.
Yeah, then we, we, we would know, we would do an investigation as to how long that individual was living there and was registered for a, a different precinct.
Is there a, a, some sort of outreach program, maybe especially during an election year, where I don't know if it's, can be considered like a survey, but just really, all the registered voters receive some kind of notice to, like, you know, if you have moved to a different precinct, to please come in and update your, your, your information, so that the the election board or office can have a more accurate information and record of who lives where, and that way, the, the voting is more fair. Is that something, maybe that's something that, I don't know if that's something that needs to be amended or revised in the, in the regulation itself, or is that a law that we need to?
I, I think that's something we could do, you know, and send out maybe postcards to
Sure.
all registered voters, and, you know, advise them if they need to come in, update your registration or your information, but I did do an interview with Thomas Mangonya and Sally Limas just recently, and I did, you know, include that, that if you would like to come in, I mean, not if you would like to, please come in and update your registration.
Yeah, just so that the, you know, the voting process can be a, a, a lot more accurate, no? Okay, so maybe that's just something, Ms. Robalaman, that you could discuss with the Director and along with the other commissioners when you, when you do get in. I guess Senator Donald did ask you about your time being at, being a former commissioner at C E C, and you kind of pretty much answered everything that he asked. You don't see any potential changes that need to be made? You know, because you, you served from twenty twelve to twenty seventeen, so after that, you've never observed of any improvements maybe, or maybe something that's not over, not, no longer working, right, it doesn't have to, you don't have to add new things, but maybe remove some things that are no longer applicable in our current times, you, you haven't observed any of that? That maybe could be discussed among the commissioners and the Director? No, okay. Maybe, this is a question more for the Director, sorry. Are there any plans or considerations to, to implement online registration for early voting? Versus just mailing the application here?
That would need election, I mean, that would be, that would need legislative action.
Legislative action, okay, but is that something that you would support?
Uh, receiving online registration?
Yes. I mean, I, I see the, it would greatly expedite the process and reduce the cost.
This is just me, but yes, but you know, I would need to ask my board members as well, how they feel.
Sure, I'm just seeing the, the, the benefits and the advantages of online registration, it's not for vote, it's not to vote online, but to really just the, the registration process, and, and that alleviates a lot of the burden on our voters who are off-island, right, and, and, and also probably will help you guys expedite the process a lot quicker, so I just wanted to see what, whether or not you would support something like that, if you know, one of us should decide to introduce a legislation.
I do.
Okay. You did talk about the, well, Senator Paul brought up the concern about seasonal workers being hired during an election year, and something caught my attention where you had mentioned that no announcements were made, they're just basically recommendations from internal staff. Is that in compliance with labor by any chance? Uh, where, you know?
Well, I, I couldn't tell you, I mean, this is just a practice that previous directors have done, so I just kind of like followed along.
So maybe that's just something to consider, maybe inquiring more with labor to ensure that, you know, the hiring practices is in compliance with.
Yes.
Yeah, because I, especially because C E C is a government entity, we want to be sure that we are compliant with any labor laws that, that applies to everyone in the hiring. When, when hiring an employee.
I'm sorry, take you back. And maybe I'm just answering too fast, or my mind's racing with everybody's questions, but yes, these are stuff that went through O P M.
Oh, okay, okay, so if it was.
My, my apologies.
Okay, all right. As I've, I, I, that's all I have, Madam Chair, are you?
Thank you, Senator Magovna, and I will now, I guess pose my questions to the Director, only because you've had the experience during, especially during this last election, with respect to runoffs. We don't, I don't proclaim to know the solution to it, but, you know, during the runoff ballots, of course, because of expediency, time constraints between a general election and a runoff election, we've had to, I think the Election Commission had to print ballots locally. It had to be manually tabulated, because the paper, of course, it does not conform to the machines metrics to, you know, to pick up any inconsistencies, so I hope, do, did you, Ms. Igito, ha, did the board Election Commission Board conduct any after-action or debriefing after the general election or the runoff election to determine what could be improved, you know, in that process?
I don't recall any debriefing regarding that process.
I think it would be advisable not only to yourself to preserve the integrity of your office, but also the integrity of the commissioners to conduct, you know, something similar. What went wrong, what went right, you know, what best practices we can continue moving forward, what are the lessons learned, only then can we improve the process. Because it's very concerning, always concerning to our constituents and to to anybody really in this community, when, when you have locally printed ballots that cannot be detected by the machine has to be manually, you know, tabulated. I think there, there could be some areas there we can improve, or the process, and like I said, I don't have the solution right now, I will look it up and see what other states or commonwealths have practiced in the past, and maybe we can move forward to improve this process. It's a continuing process, we understand that, there's always ways to improve, you know, even a tiny fraction of the process, so that's all my recommendation really. In, in hearing all the other members with their questions as well, I don't have anything further for Ms. Robalaman, unless any of the other committee members have, I will recognize Senator Paul at this time.
Thank you, Chair.
First, para si, Mrs. Rabalamin, I know, si si Senator Donald, he, one of his own concern that Malagunzo non go comprende si fail to vote, no, na listing. Kada después de elección, gua listan todo de fail to vote. Uh, i concern gi, i, gua i mail system, guana bene, deli kwekwe ti mogi, no, guana puet genigi, an runoff sa i or or i general election, November, busy sia i, te para Christmas. Pus, gua jina, bota dos sia sta, ma mambota lo, atasama tu mogi. Pus, i zota lo na, lele na, if you missed to uh election, no, saiko malagnus nanmo, pus, tada sepi, durma maga gamzo na, afana taigu na ano? Olmasa oni ti mambota onai, gi mapus dan gi mapus na, pus, ya, unga, to di tu mambobota zo. Lo, te atungo na, te matu kon tempu, mogi saipan na, sa gua deadline na, na epa marisibi. Pus, biti unu na rekomendasyon na, i ata ni postmark, no, gi ana ana ono, i i mambobota. Za mesia, te matu mogi kon tempu lo, como ma postmark before November, whatever election day. Then, te batufung butunya, lo ma considera zi na, mungama laknus gi roster nanya na. Si na lektati, ti ti bulan na problemano, lo, i rekon na, significant number ano, gi kada election na za za guan e te matu, te matungo na te marisibi balu tunya. Estaki, pofa mambota, ma man request, pus, ma masan oni na, no, pus ata fan, you know, the the director no discuss, za ni member, preciso, no, pa gua za. De pa si na fan, no, no director, how, asta manis ti cross verification? Izi, guan e anista para, no eleksyon, iligmu, iligmizu ne, ne botu, bota do na ma register Guam or ma register California. Do you guys actually take the roster of the CNMI uh program and give it to Guam and Guam runs it through their system?
No, cause um Guam and the CNMI Election Commission share their voter registration, so they they share their listing with us, we share ours with them.
What about uh California?
Um, no, we don't share that.
So how would you know that um?
Well, when we vet the application when they come in. So, uh, a voter sends in their absentee reg- uh, absentee request form, it would state where they would want their ballot sent to, their forwarding address.
So you check hundred percent?
So whatever state they're in, we would go into their Election Commission site and see if that.
That's if they registered, newly registered?
If they're registered there.
New new registration, like they registered today or tomorrow?
No, it's every application that comes in.
Or every absentee ballot request? You are, you go over that? And and you just go online and?
Not with all the fifty states, depending where the voter is residing, yeah.
Question, so how do you treat deployed military where they have a foreign address? They're not necessarily registered, like APO, FPO address?
Well, if it's military, we don't look into it. We don't, because in our election law, you know, whether you're medical, um, education or military, then, you know, we don't see the need to vet it.
The military, right? On the absentee voting forms, I noticed that um every election night you have a a form to request for absentee ballot and it has to be that particular election year, right? But that that form is usually not available until a particular date. What what is the purpose for that?
I couldn't tell you, but that's in our election law, when it would be ready, I mean, provided.
Oh yeah, it's in the election law, but but is that necessary? In other words, you know, it's only available um right after the ballots are available. But there's no reason to to wait till the ballots are available to request, right? I mean, why couldn't we allow the voters to request way ahead? You already know that that there's an election coming up in November, why cannot I in June uh request ahead of time so that uh I would know then that you receive it on time, because if you just wait till August or, I don't know when the exact date is. Yeah, August, then you're gonna, you're gonna have a lot of envelopes coming in and you're gonna be busy all the other stuff and and then some will fall through the cracks and there's just so many things, but if you allow me since June, you know, pick a date, uh and and my question is afana, afana debia, this the August, afana, ti si na gi away ahead, cosa ki stau tungo na gaigizu, gi muska kwe lazo, uh California be apply geni ni June? I cannot apply because I cannot even write a black and white letter, I cannot use last year's form, uh, which is a standard form, it just says, here's my address to send my ballot, I'm a student, I'm da da da. You, I cannot do that in in July or June, I I'm restricted to use that exact form. I mean, and it could be the same form as the last election, it's just the date. So is there a purpose, uh, um, a real purpose for that?
I I couldn't tell you, but uh it's in our election law, so it says.
But my question is, that's good because it prevents cheating, or that's good because we cannot it prevents confusion, there's no purpose, right?
Not that I see it, there isn't.
Okay, so so that's something attorney that maybe we can say that, you know, as long as it's a standard form, it doesn't have to be, you know, the thing about it is is they have to download that same form and it has to be that form, I can actually make my own form with the same thing, but they wouldn't honor it, right? They wouldn't honor if it's not that form, even though if it's exact same you know, form, but because it doesn't have the Board of Election uh date on top and they cannot honor it. Okay, so 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 that's something that we need to to correct. Can I ask you, um, uh, Director? Uh, what are some of the challenges in the runoff for you? Because I I ask this because, you know, the total voters in the CNMI on the November election is like two or three thousand more than the runoff, right? So two thousand people drop off the, and and that's because maybe they don't care anymore or what, but but I think a lot of it is the absentee ballot, not enough time to send it and then to be sent back, right? Is that, is that the main?
That's the challenge, yeah. Trying to get absentee out at a certain timeframe to give ample time to the voters that are off island, but also trying to run the election year as well. And fourteen days right after general election.
But that's the challenge, it's just getting those ballots out, no? Uh, the other thing, uh, uh, Madam Chair, I'll just, my last question is, when you order the ballots, you know, we hear stories out there that you know, uh, is there accountability in ordering ballots? I mean, you order ten thousand or twenty thousand?
From locally, you mean?
So there, so this is all fabricated stories that ballots and they cannot account for?
The public auditor is present, so, yeah. When we do receive, we tab, uh, we do inventory and they take notes of our inventory sheets as well.
Where do you order the general election ballots from?
Uh, from our vendor election system and software.
So it's from off island, not, okay. Is there any assurance? I mean, I I'm just thinking you know, uh, I would like to be assured as a a voter that these ballots are legitimate, they were ordered from your office. You know, what's to stop, let's say, Senator Manglonya from ordering from the same vendor? The exact same ballot, is there, I I just want to understand what you guys?
I I don't think that, I mean, I can't speak on the vendor's side, but I'm sure that they won't, they wouldn't allow that. It was, it would be strictly just the agency itself that's uh requesting that uh they print the ballots.
But I could, I don't know, it's it's a topic for offline uh.
I probably could ask them more and give you more uh answers to your questions.
It it's just a question that just popped up in my mind, but uh I have no further questions. Recognize Senator Karina Magovna.
Thank you, Chairwoman, just a, just a brief one on um the NMD. Would you happen to know what's the NMD count as of today by any chance? Or what what the number was you last remembered it to be?
Uh, ten thousand, I believe?
About ten thousand, and is that, uh, that information is available on CC's website?
I'm not sure.
So ten thousand out of the seventeen thousand voters, okay. Like, wha- what is the, uh, what is your understanding on the purpose of registering NMDs?
I know when it first came on board, it was um in the event, there was an issue with Article twelve. Uh, we would have a registered NMD, but I think with the lawsuit with the um, Mr. Davis, that was, you know, so after that, it kind of died down. The registration.
But um how important is it that we maintain and continue to register our NMDs?
I feel it's important.
So what what actions uh or, you know, what what can we do to, you know, continue, to help our people continue to?
I think you, as a candidate, should advise your you know, constituents, you know, registered vote, uh, registered for NMD. Cause maybe some don't know, you know, and that could be on our part. But um if we could get your assistance as, you know?
Well, I'll be sure to uh encourage you know, everyone that I talk to going forward to please uh come in and regen- register if there are NMDs, right? Um, so, I mean, I I just wanted to let you know that some have shared with me that uh when they uh went to the office, CC office to register, they were never asked or informed uh about the uh NMD registr- registration, so maybe that's just something that you have to maybe make it a part of your uh standard procedure when people come into your office, just sharing. And then, um, also, uh, does their office rec- uh receive uh federal grants by any chance?
Uh, we do.
And may I ask like for what?
Election security?
Se- security? Okay, um, that's all I have. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Magovna, for the last round, I will recognize Senator Donald Manglonya.
Thank you, Chair. Um, sorry, just clarification, um, Director, the registry. So would you say that majority of the ten thousand are registered voters? Because these are people walking to your office to register to vote, and so they would register their NMD status, so we don't even have a count on minors for the most part?
We we have minors registered as well.
But not as, I mean, the the makeup of the ten thousand are mostly people who actually go in to register to vote and at the same time, so we would need to reach out. So I think maybe a recommendation with the the commission and your office is to you know, as part of the the budget, it's to focus, you know, some staff or maybe some funding to that division of your your department and you know, we can try to figure it out, whether it be something that could be covered by you know, some of the monies that maybe DPL or MPT or something to that effect to try to help support that and try to get a better accurate counting of um our NMD population here. Um, because, you know, I don't know if NMD is even a topic of discussion for the commissioners um throughout the years, but I, you know, again, just to to get a better understanding of that and, you know, the NMD population within the CNMI. Um, and to, like I said, maybe if the board and your office can figure out how to do outreach to the schools and even just collect at the schools, whether it be an inclusion in their registration application, similar to when adults go in to vote, and so I hope that's something, but um, thank you so much, Director, for for taking on these questions, while I know you're not uh here as a nominee, but you've shared a lot of uh important information that I hope uh Ms. Rabalamin can take back, if confirmed, and share with the rest of the board members, and so thank you both uh for your time today.
Thank you, Senator Manglonya. One last question, I, question I promised regarding the registry. Since April of twenty eleven, when the NMD uh registry was established, has the list ever been purged of deceased individuals? So that we can be better informed, whether it's accurate or not? Has it ever been?
I'll say yes and no, just cause if the um NMD registered voter is deceased and they're purged off on the uh registration site, it's automatically purged off on the NMD, yeah.
Has there ever been a glitch in these purgings? Maybe you deleted someone accidentally?
I mean, no, I I.
There's always a possibility, right?
Not, not to my knowledge.
When was the last time the registry, reg- registry, both for the voting and the NMD uh been purged? Or or been amend, uh, you know, updated to purge deceased individuals or?
It's the same uh as uh Senator Magovna's uh question. It's, it's every day. And if we do get a, I mean, monthly on the side, on on the vital statistics side.
Okay, so you said the two lists are are linked, right? So that if you purge one, it automatically is person. Is it the same way when you register? So when you add someone to the voters list, does it automatically? Because it's linked?
Yeah, because there is a, there's a link there that would say registered for NMD, you'll either put yes or no.
Got it. Um, that's all I have for today, uh, Ms. Rabalamin, thank you for joining us this morning, and you are hereby dismissed. This committee meeting will be in recess at this time, it is now eleven thirty nine, and we will reconvene at two P M. this afternoon to hear the um and vet the nominees for the Marianas Public Land Trust, Mr. Alvaro Santos and Dr. Rita A. Sablon, thank you, we are in recess.